Good evening. February 5, 2018, Indiana County Council is now in session. You're requested to stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Fink will lead the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you give this council the wisdom and the courage to make the right decisions here tonight and also to lead this county. We also ask that you protect those overseas. In your name we pray. Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Good evening once again. Madam Secretary, would you please read the Ethics Statement?
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the County Council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this time, we're going to have a brief presentation. The Administration has asked to give an update on the general development plans. My great pleasure to introduce the County Executive, Mr. Steve Schu. Can you hear the bell? Two minutes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the Council, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you about one of the most pressing challenges that our county will face over the next several years: land use. Anaromal County is a wonderful place, as we all know, and more and more people want to come here to live and work, but an increasing population puts stress on our schools, our roads, and our public safety infrastructure. To manage these stresses, our Administration is committed to smart growth in areas with adequate infrastructure and to preservation of our rural lands. We've now commenced the once every decade general development planning process. Right now, our team at the Office of Planning and Zoning is engaging the public through listening sessions to assist in developing the 2019 GDP. As we undertake this process, we hear frequently from communities that are grappling with changing communities, traffic congestion, crowded schools. We hear those concerns and are committed to addressing them in the upcoming GDP. We've already instituted several reforms to better manage development and to strengthen the county's planning process. We're nearing completion of the county's comprehensive transportation functional master plan. With your support, we've accelerated the frequency of general development planning by reducing the GDP timetable from 10 years to eight. We've instituted a moratorium on solar parks and rural lands. We have so far conducted six listening sessions in every corner of the county and are soliciting comments online, and I was delighted to sign Councilman Grasso's bill to reduce the threshold for school APF to 95 percent. These reforms are good first steps, but we need to go further. I'd like now to announce additional actions pertaining to zoning, the GDP process, variances, special exceptions, and modifications. Let me start with zoning. We will be submitting legislation to the Council to place a moratorium on upzonings in Anaromal County until the completion of the GDP and the comprehensive rezoning process. Such a moratorium is an important and customary component of a high-quality planning process. We also intend to submit a charter amendment that will require our Office of Planning and Zoning Department to certify that a proposed zoning change is consistent with the land use designation for that parcel in the GDP. This will give the general development plan more teeth. With respect to the GDP, we plan to submit legislation that will mandate a multi-year small-area planning process every eight years to commence immediately after the adoption of the GDP and comprehensive rezoning. This reform will ensure that small-area plans do not become outdated and will give local communities more frequent input into the planning process. Next are the processes for variances and special exceptions. The county typically grants about 300 variances and 20 special exceptions each year and has done so for many years. I'm concerned about the current lack of rigor in these processes. Accordingly, I've asked our land use departments to implement the following reforms: apply a stricter standard when assessing whether a variance meets the requirements, particularly the "not of their own making" requirement and the necessity requirement; expand the area of notifications surrounding a proposed variance, ensuring that no one will be caught by surprise; develop a system of administrative waivers for simple, non-controversial site improvements to allow the administrative hearings officer to concentrate on more complex, controversial cases; and introduce legislation to require an applicant for a special exception to demonstrate that the proposed use would not have a more deleterious effect than if the development were on another parcel with the same zoning. Our overall goal is to reduce the number of granted variances by 50 percent. That goal is aspirational and, I will note, is aggressive. Lastly, modifications. Under the modification process, the planning and zoning officer has the authority to grant waivers from the specific requirements of the county code. This process is necessary. The code cannot contemplate the unique characteristics of every parcel of land in Anaromal County. Anaromal County now typically grants approximately 1,000 modifications per year. Most of these modifications are appropriate, such as those that facilitate more green space or reduce environmental impact, but many are not appropriate. Therefore, I've instructed the Office of Planning and Zoning to implement a stricter review process for modification requests and to certify that an approved modification meets the requirements set forth in the code. I've also instructed the planning and zoning officer to no longer issue modifications that would allow applicants to skip the requirement to hold a public meeting. My goal in this regard is to achieve a 40 percent reduction in granted modifications. Taken together, I believe these reforms and new procedures will bring more rigor to our zoning, variance, special exception, and modification processes, will slow development, and will improve our management of the county's lands and waterways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. County Executive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Are you willing to take questions?
Afraid to.
Are you...
Willing to, yes indeed, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. County Executive. I mean, certainly, I mean, from what I heard from you, those are exciting announcements. I had one question, as a council member who has attended one of the listening sessions for the GDP, and the staff handed out a very nice timeline that outlined everything. I don't believe that timeline contemplated small-area plans for all of the different places. Would we still, and I support small-area plans, I think that's a great idea, I'm just wondering if that will have any effect on that timeline that Mr. Hager has been putting out, because I understand there's a large amount of public participation and process that would go along with small-area plans, and we don't want to try and compress that too much.
Absolutely. We are fully committed to a small-area planning process, think it's indispensable to quality land planning. What I'm envisioning is an eight-year cycle whereby we engage in two years of general development planning, followed by one year of rezoning. That process is already underway. Upon completion of the rezoning process, we will then begin a five-year cycle of small-area planning.
I see.
And the legislation I referenced will not only require that small-area planning take place during that five years, but will designate a specific minimum number of small-area plans that the office must prepare.
But you're not thinking that there will be specific small-area plans done in advance of this current cycle of GDP?
No, that's probably not possible.
All right. Might think about doing one for Crownsville, but anyway, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith?
So, just to piggyback on the small area, would the Administration be open to, because I certainly was, you know, going to take my own time and actually do a small-area plan when it came to at least two communities, specifically Lythegum and Jessup. The community is very engaged and they're willing to do that. I was going to sort of sit down with them and go through a small-area-like exercise plan with them to flush out exactly what they would like to see, how they would like to see their community, and then incorporated those changes into the general development plan, outside of the vehicle that you were using, that the planning officer was going to use, basically my own process, still with stakeholders, but just wanted to know if you were still open to that flavor from our side of the house when it comes to small-area plans. Even though your organization isn't doing it, I was certainly going to take it upon myself to sit down with them to actually map one out.
Well, we're certainly eager to work with you on all aspects of the plan. I often defer to the planning officer to discuss how we would incorporate the type of planning that you're talking about that's very granular into the general development planning processes, which is much more at a macro-countywide level. But we certainly, whatever efforts you put in over the next two to three years, we would still want to, I think, engage in the full small-area planning process throughout your communities.
I was actually going to do this in the next seven months, believe it or not, and then sort of get with Mr. Hager and say, hey, here's the research and here's the stuff that we've done for Jessup and Lythegum, and this is what I would like to see, at least from District One, incorporated into that overall sort of master plan.
We're happy to take... Push the button, I think. There you go. All right. We are happy to take public input in whatever form it's provided. The only stipulation I would make on that is that we do have certain timetables to keep, certain things are taking place at certain times, and we wanted to make sure that we would receive the result of your engagement exercise in sufficient time to be putting pen to paper, as it were, on the various stages of things that we're working on. But I would be more than happy to sit down with you and your staff to talk about how you're doing things and to make sure that your work has the fullest possible attention in the GDP.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Grasso.
First of all, County Executive, she, I want to thank you for coming out. I'm trying to get the whole grab behind this whole deal here, because it sounds like in your opening statement that you agree that the development is kind of moving a little too fast for Anaromal County. That's what it appears to me. So, the thing that's got me quite annoyed is that I'm getting a mixed message here, because I put legislation in several months ago that basically would freeze all upzoning in Anaromal County until the general development plan was done. Because to me, I think the general development plan is a microscopic look of Anaromal County and the trends of which way into populations go. And so, when I put the legislation in to stop all upzoning, because in my personal opinion, I think the faucet is running wide open right now, the developments are popping up all over the place, and it made sense to me to turn around and freeze everything until we had a comprehensive look of all of Anaromal County, see where our population's going, seeing where our schools and everything are going. But you guys didn't support it, and that's the part that's got me confused. The second thing that come down the line over here is that I put another bill in under the cluster development. And the deal was that Anaromal County had with these developers was that we're going to allow you this intense development on these pieces of property, okay? And in return, there's going to have to be a fair trade-off for environmental protections, open space, whatever the case may be. And I found out, okay, that this cluster bill, when I put it into play, that we're allowing variances, and every time the variance was being given, it was taken away from open space or forestation or land, open land that needs to be out there. So, three things. It was open space, it was, what the heck was it, um, community, the community area, rec area, and I think one other thing. And what it came to me, time and time again, Larry Tom was here, is that the developer wasn't happy with the deal. And if they had a piece of property and it said it was 10 houses, that's all you're going to have, and you're going to have to leave so much for open space and so much for rec area, okay, that's the deal. But every time they turned around, they come to Anaromal County, and they would get a variance. And the variance made them go from 10 lots to 11 lots or 12 lots. And in each time, the areas, things that we're supposed to protecting, open space and forestation area, it always got attacked every time to make the developer happy. The developer was already getting a sweet deal with 10 lots, but they weren't happy with that. They wanted to go to 11 and 12, and planning and zoning let them go through. So, I turn around and I put legislation, and it says there'll be no variances on cluster developments. It is what it is. You get 10 lots, that's it. Don't come back to Anaromal County and ask to take away from these critical areas. You're against that. Then I just heard you turn around and say to me just a minute ago that you want to have smart development, okay? And I got that. The thing that's got me confused more than anything over here is that several months ago, I had Ms. Tate turn around and pull out Doug Holman on everything he approved in the last year and a half. And mysteriously enough, the people that got approved were large developers, and they went and took large parcels and went from one house per acre to 15 houses per acre. In fact, it was three, the same developer, three times. In fact, that sheet that Ms. Tate did only showed it twice. Doug Holman opened his mouth up and said, oh, no, it was three of them. But yet the mom, pa that has the one-acre lot was denied, but the developer that went from one house per acre to 15 houses per acre on these large lots of 20, 30 acres was granted three times. I don't want to mention his name, because I said I wouldn't badger it, but trust me, I want to say it, okay? And that was okay. Then I turn around and I look at Mr. Fink's area in Pasadena, okay? You can't get out of Pasadena when there is going to be a situation. But we turned around and we let that same developer that I just talked about, again, get a 15, 20-acre parcel that goes from one house per acre to 15 houses per acre in Pasadena. And everyone knows that when there's an accident, you're going to be landlocked for eight hours. That's generally how it rolls. And you know what I got? The answer I got was, well, that's what the surrounding areas are, they're already zoned for R-15, so we're going to go and give R-15. And to me, I think that's probably one of the most ridiculous answers that I've ever got. So, basically, I went back and I said, so we've screwed things up for Anaromal County for the last 15 years, and so we're going to go ahead and continue to screw up, okay? Because it's already R-15, we're going to go ahead and give it R-15. Now, these are the things that I just seen going on, and it just doesn't seem like to me that everything that you're saying is kind of, it's sounding great what you're saying now, but I can just tell you all the things that I put in and you were against, okay? And I got right now another piece of legislation that's going to come down the pipe, that's going to turn around and physically count the seats before a developer goes in. Developer puts that development up, those seats will be available for those kids. I'm just going to be interested to see how that works out. So, you know, they're just my things, and like I said, I'm just kind of confused, and I'm trying to understand why we're getting this thing here and I'm getting it there, and why it's been like, anything that had to do with the developer, I never got the support from the Administration.
Okay, let me try to take those in turn. On your first issue of upzoning, your prior bill, the issue is timing. There's two very important things that are going on with respect to timing. One is, we are now in the GDP process, and we have always maintained as an Administration that the appropriate time to deal with all of these issues is during the GDP process, not piecemeal. And the reason for that is because land planning is incredibly complex, and there are all of these different mechanisms: modifications, variances, special exceptions, upzoning, they're all connected to one another, and they have to be viewed in their entirety to have the appropriate level of integrity to the process and to make sure that you're not creating a problem over here by modifying something here. So, that's why we have spent the last six or nine months studying all of these issues comprehensively and have now put forward a complete plan that addresses all components to the extent we think is appropriate. The other timing issue is that we have a still relatively new planning officer who needed time to get to the point where he is today, where he was able to make recommendations to the Administration on how we could better manage our lands. And again, the program that we presented to you this evening reflects his efforts and his work. On clustering, I couldn't agree with you more. The cluster law in this county has problems, and I think we worked with you very closely to try to fix that law. I don't think we were successful, as I recall, with that legislation, but we are happy to keep working with you. I don't think the answer is a blanket, no variances for that type of development, because any development is going to take place on a piece of property with unique characteristics, and it may very well be more consistent with the intent of the code or with environmental considerations or other factors to grant a variance. Not all variances are bad. And then finally, the administrative hearing officer and his decisions, as I think everyone knows, he is an independent quasi-judicial officer, not answerable, and two, the Administration does not take orders from me, so his decisions are independent of anything we might desire as an Administration. I think you were referring specifically to Wishing Rock. When you raised the concerns about Wishing Rock, I personally visited Wishing Rock, and this is just one where you and I have a different point of view on the matter. I do believe that that was an appropriate decision by the administrative hearings officer, because the parcel was surrounded by, it was a doughnut inside an intensively developed area of commercial, multi-floor residential, and highway. There was nothing in there, really, in my opinion, left to preserve. But that being said, I do agree with your concern about the principle of creeping development. If a justification for an upzoning is that the area around it is an upzoning, then that becomes the next outer boundary for another request that the community has changed, and you wind up with development that never ends. And that's why it's so important that zoning decisions comport with land use designations in the GDP. So, if a land use designation says that this area is commercial and this area is residential, the creeping factor can't go beyond that boundary line between those two land use designations. Zoning has to comply with the land use decisions we all make in the GDP process.
All right. So, let me throw this one out here for you. Don't you believe that it's reckless to allow development to go in any direction it's pretty much going right now, when we know that in a year and a half or so, you're going to have the GDP done, and you're going to know exactly where Anaromal County stands on a land use? But in the meantime, while we're working all this out, these developers are taking advantage of the situation, and they're going there and they're doing whatever they want to do. In fact, without mentioning names, one person come to me, for what it's worth, and says, you know why I like Anaromal County? He said, because you can get anything done in Anaromal County when it comes to development. Now, anybody could say that kind of statement, but I was heartbroken to hear something like that. So, my point is that I think it's very reckless to turn around, and I don't think it's asking a lot to stop all upzoning. I think it's fair to say to you, you got this part for your property, R1, C2, or whatever you got, and that's the way it stands until Anaromal County has sat down and physically figured out, is your move going to be best for Anaromal County? You're not telling them you can't build, you're just telling them they can't make it worse than what they're doing. And I think, like I said earlier, that you've got a faucet of water running over here, and it's filling up the basement, while we're all deciding what we're going to do. And then before you know it, the whole basement's full with water, and suddenly, okay, well, let's get a sub pump, we don't mess things up, it's too late. And I just don't think it's responsible to allow it to keep on going until you got a comprehensive look, we have a comprehensive look, shouldn't allow any upzoning. And that's just my take.
Well, I don't think I would characterize development of the county as reckless. We do have a GDP, but it is old, it's stale, and the small-area plans are especially stale, and that's why we accelerated the process at your consent or at your request to freshen it all up. It does concern me when I hear developers say that we're too easy with modifications and variances, and I've heard that. And I mentioned in my early remarks that I'm very concerned that we have not had enough rigor in those processes, and that changes as of today.
Okay. So, like I said, I've got this legislation coming at this point, and I don't know how well-familiar you are with that, and I'm just going to throw the numbers out. Basically, on a 2,200-square-foot house, it's broke down to three parts, right? You have like $225 goes towards the police department, okay, for impact fees. It's $2,000, I think it was, for $2,200 for roads, and double that for $6,000, whatever the case may be, for the Board of Education. Now, I don't know where they come up with those numbers. We talked about this earlier, that there was a committee that put together and looked at impact fees of what Anaromal County was supposed to be, and back in, you know, umpteen years ago, they came up with a number, and then the council, prior council, decided to go down with it, and then the economy hit, and they even went farther down with it, and according to Mr. Trumpauer, that they've been slowly making their way back up. But the fact of the matter is, if you think of the numbers, you know, it's around $10,000 is not nearly enough an impact fee for a 2,200-square-foot house, because you got $200 just going to the police. You talk to the chief, he's telling me, he's got, at any given time, he has 30 vacant spots. Now, we know, I talked to him, you know, we're talking about the academy, that he can't get enough people through the academy, because we don't have the new academy, whatever the case may be, but eventually, that's going to make a turning point. And so, then there's got to be a point, well, where's the money going to come from? And the problem I have with the developers is, I don't care if you develop, but I'm not going to bankroll your development, because after you make your money, we're stuck with the bill, and what you for you know it, we're spending $30, $40 million for an elementary school, $100 million for a high school, and they walk away clean hands. So, my answer is not allowing more development, my answer is more to revitalization. That's what I believe in. So, without going into a whole speech here, I appreciate your time coming out tonight.
Yeah, the impact fees were last reviewed during the Leopold Administration, comprehensively reviewed, and it's time to look at them again, and should the citizens send me back for another term, it's on our agenda to review the impact fees during the next administration. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing further. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down and presenting us with this information. Thank you, Mr. County Executive. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included on the printed agenda. Your remarks will be limited to two minutes. I have two signed up, Donna Goines and Lisa Van Busker. Could you come down at this time, please?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to invite anyone else?
Thank you, I was just going to do that, yes. Anybody else who, even if you haven't signed up, you'd like to come down, come down at this time. We have seats right here at this table, so come and join us. So, there's a couple other seats. Anybody else come now, please, or don't come at all, okay? Thank you. First up is Ms. Donna Goines. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Donna Goines. I'm retired from Anaromal County, and I thank you for this opportunity. It's come to my attention, and it concerns me that the county is considering privatizing or outsourcing the claims management of the self-insurance fund. I served in the role of managing that fund for 30-plus years, and it was outsourced, or the claims administration was done by a third-party administrator when we started, and we found that that did not work. So, we brought it in-house to the county and developed a staff in the county. That reduced the cost per claim, that motivated, it was not a profit motivation, it was a savings motivation for management. We reserved claims better, which gave a better picture of the self-insurance fund, which leads to a financial stability for the county. When the county, several years later, brought in this Board of Education, the Board of Education Self-Inurance Fund at that time did have a third-party administrator, and when we took them in, their claims were so poorly managed, they were paying lots of stuff that didn't need to be paid, shouldn't have been paid, and they weren't even reserving claims right. It ended up being better managed when we brought it in-house. A third-party administrator is profit-motivated, they're going to handle claims to get money, not to save money. They'll not be interested in the employee, they won't be interested in the county's bottom line, and financial stability and better management keeps it in-house.
Thank you very much, Ms. Goines. Thank you for your service to Anaromal County. Thank you for your information tonight. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith.
You said, how long did you work in that staff, Ms. Goines?
From 1977 to 2011.
Wow, so you were there quite some time. How many staff members are there?
When I retired, there was 11. That included several in safety, some in management, and the administrative staff also. So, there was four claims adjusters to handle all the claims for the county, the Board of Education, the library, and the community college.
What I'll do is, once the Administration... What I'll do is, once, once the administration comes back up, I'll definitely bring it up, because that sounds like an inherently government function I think we should maintain, and not, not outsource, but I'll ask them when they come back up. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Pruski was next.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, and then...
Thank you again for your testimony. How did you find out about this? Because this is new to me.
Um, I've heard, heard it through county employees and through attorneys that represent county employees. I've still plugged into the county, because I've worked here so long, I know a lot of people, and they, some of them came to me and told me what was happening. And then I had an individual come to me from the county, from a attorney outfit that represents county employees, saying, you know, really, the county council needs to be made aware of this.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. Just one follow-up. Again, I'm certainly going to dig a little bit deeper, but you, you were saying that it actually probably ends up costing more money with a third-party administrator. Am I correct?
It would cost significantly more with a third-party administrator.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you know, Ms. Goines, do you know how we stack up next to other counties with regards to our sort of ratio of employees and payouts and those kind of things?
I think it probably is about the same as when I left. The county's claim cost was below the other counties. They were significantly below any 30, third-party administrators. We even compared to the local government insurance trust, the claims that they handled, and we were significantly lower than that. Not just in claims cost, not in claims management cost, but in the cost of the claims.
So what are they trying to fix?
I don't know. That's why I've come to you, to express my concern.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And thank you again, Ms. Goines. Appreciate it very much. Ms. Van Busker.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Peruca, and good evening, members of the county council. I'm Lisa Van Busker, representing Start School Later, Anaronda County, and I'm here to thank you and celebrate the third anniversary of your resolution 6-15, which you passed unanimously on February 2, 2015, encouraging the Board of Education and Anaronda County Public Schools to expeditiously take measures to establish safe and healthy high school hours for all students. So I want to thank you for that resolution. I'm sorry that they have not acted expeditiously enough, in my opinion, for that, but thank you for funding the purchase of the transportation software and the $600,000 that made the 13-15-minute slide possible this year, even though it's not the best answer. So I can only hope that when and if the board ever actually uses the software to develop possible options for school hours that are safe, healthy, and age-appropriate, that the future Board of Educate, or, sorry, the future county council, whatever its makeup, come 2018, will act to fund such requests in accordance with Resolution 615. So unless any of you want to run for Board of Education, any, any? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. No questions? Thank you. That we, oh, excuse me. Ms. Johnson.
Julie Johnson, P.O. Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I'll tell you, you guys all look younger and slimmer, especially Mr. Fink. Man. Anyway, you know...
He might have got a haircut this time again.
Anything you need, Ms. Johnson, what do you need? Police at the, police at the house? What is it, planning and zoning?
Well, tonight I'm here because I wanted to follow up on the, you know, some serious issues we're all concerned about, mass incarceration, the high cost of incarceration, the high cost of, or the, you know, the real failures of getting people out of being incarcerated and winding up going back to prison, because they're, they just can't reintegrate after they've been incarcerated for extended periods of time, which is what happened, you know, under the, you know, a lot of the, you know, Bill Clinton's 1996 law. So I wanted to mention this book by Danielle Allen, named, it's titled "Cuz: The Life and Times of Michael A." She is a government professor at Harvard. Michael A. was her cousin. They're all from the same, same family. He wound up being incarcerated and had a terrible time. So she, she does sort of Michelle Alexander, but in a totally different way of humanizing, here is one person, and this is what happened to him. But the real reason that I, I really want to emphasize, we're talking about opioid epidemics and the problems of all of these folks. She points out in this book that over the last 10 years, every year, Americans have spent $100 billion on drugs, illegal drugs. You add that up over 10 years, that's $1 trillion. This has led to all kinds of corruption, all kinds of misconduct, you know, you know, the government systems cannot work because the power of organized crime is overwhelming the, the people who are involved. Well, so Mr. Fink said I could have anything I want. Anyway, this, this is really something that's really important to look at, because the opioid epidemic is not to be looked at in isolation.
We understand. Thank you very much. It's good to see you again.
Thank you. We have met the enemy, and he is us. That's from POGA, about environmental issues, but it's also about the Trump.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. That concludes the, the invitation to the audience. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda? Hearing done, may I have a motion to the partial reading of any bill resolution or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved, Mr. Smith.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of January 16, 2018.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Michael Peruca at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Grasso, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Boy Scout Troop 804 Millersville.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 16, 2018?
So moved, Mr. Smith.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of January 16, 2018 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 518, An Ordinance Concerning the Issue and Sale and Delivery of Special Obligation Refunding Bonds in an Aggregate Principal Amount Not to Exceed $16 Million in One or More Series to Be Secured by Taxes Levied on the Tax Increment on Property in the Village South at Wauchapel Development District, Special Taxes on Property in the Village South at Wauchapel Special Taxing District, and a Guarantee Provided by Anaronda County, Maryland to Refund All or a Portion of the Outstanding Anaronda County, Maryland Special Obligation Bonds, Village South at Wauchapel Project, Series 2010, and Determining Certain Terms and Provisions in Connection with the Issue and Sale, Delivery, and Payment of Such Bonds. Bill Number 618, An Ordinance Concerning the Issue and Sale and Delivery of Special Obligation Refunding Bonds in an Aggregate Principal Amount Not to Exceed $30 Million in One or More Series to Be Secured by Taxes Levied on the Tax Increment on Property in the National Business Park North Development District, Special Taxes on Property in the National Business Park North Special Taxing District, and a Guarantee Provided by Anaronda County, Maryland to Refund All or a Portion of the Outstanding Anaronda County, Maryland Special Obligation Bonds, National Business Park North Project, Series 2010, and Determining Certain Terms and Provisions in Connection with the Issue and Sale and Delivery and Payment of Such Bonds. Bill Number 718, An Ordinance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, Annapolis Solar Park. Bill Number 818, An Ordinance Concerning Animal Control, Food and Water for Animals. Bill Number 918, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Certificate of Use Publication.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 218, Resolution Urging Members of the General Assembly to Support Senate Bill 19 and Senate Bill 46 in Furtherance of Better Business Practices Related to the Winterization of Boats and Safe Boating Practices Related to the Dangers of Carbon Monoxide. Bill Number 318, I'm sorry, Resolution Number 318, Resolution Urging Members of the Anaronda County Board of Education and the Superintendent of Anaronda County Public Schools to Promote and Increase STEM and Cyber Educational Opportunities in All County Schools. Resolution Number 418, Resolution Urging the Maryland Department of Transportation and the Maryland Transit Administration to Ensure Proper Security at Light Rail Stations in Anaronda County.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to suspend the rules and hear the vote on Resolution 218 out of order?
So moved, second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution Number 218 out of order is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Resolution 218.
Resolution Number 218, Resolution Urging Members of the General Assembly to Support Senate Bill 19 and Senate Bill 46 in Furtherance of Better Business Practices Related to the Winterization of Boats and Safe Boating Practices Related to the Dangers of Carbon Monoxide.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if many of you read the article in the Capitol and several other publications about the untimely death of Matthew McHale. He was an employee at a boatyard winterizing a boat, and basically died of carbon monoxide. Senator Riley, who has introduced two bills, which are in this resolution, 19 and 46, basically provide sensible business regulations and education about carbon, carbon monoxide for winterization. And again, I had several constituents who know this family, who are concerned, and certainly trying to make a difference, so that this does, this does not happen to other folks in terms of his death and the reporting that was occurred, and that's what this resolution simply does. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any, any discussion? We will open up the public, a public hearing on this, on this resolution? Anyone wants to comment? Please come down now. Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 218.
Resolution Number 218, Resolution Urging Members of the General Assembly to Support Senate Bill 19 and Senate Bill 46 in Furtherance of Better Business Practices Related to the Winterization of Boats and Safe Boating Practices Related to the Dangers of Carbon Monoxide.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Any further discussion? Any thoughts? Hearing done. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 218.
Mr. Fink.
Just because I'm not familiar with either of these bills, and this resolution was just introduced this evening, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one abstention. Resolution Number 218 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill Number 9517 as amended.
Bill Number 9517 is amended, An Ordinance Concerning Anaronda County Employee Retirement Savings Plan.
Thank you. Administration is here. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the county executive's office with me at the table, Nancy Duden from the Office of Law, Andy Rhodes from Personnel, John Hammond from Budget, and outside counsel Barry Downey. As we've discussed at the last several council meetings, Bill 9517 is our legislation to create an optional 401A plan for county employees. We would ask you to support this bill and pass it tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Smith, excuse me, Mr. Smith.
Certainly supportive. Real quick, Mr. Marzick, and just to piggyback, I know this is probably off-topic a little bit, and I don't want you necessarily to respond, but if you can send us an email on the claims insurance issue...
Sure.
...that the previous speaker at the beginning had spoke about, definitely want to, if there's any sort of intention of the, the county executive to sort of outsource that, I mean, I think, I mean, we certainly want to be aware of it, so.
I'll just read, you all were presented with this report from our office. There's a preliminary report from the Commission on Innovation and Excellence that was chaired by Mr. Westerfeld and Ms. Lauder, and I pulled up the report from, which is all listed, preliminary report is listed on the county webpage, and I think what the speaker was referring to is, I'll read directly from it. Number two, the county's risk management division is notably more cost-effective than that of surrounding counties, costing $39 per employee per year, compared to costs in surrounding counties of $130 to $162 per employee per year. If the additional staff requested by the division were included, allowing for better claims processing and potentially reducing claims or payments, the division's operating cost would still only reach $54 per employee, less than half the cost of surrounding counties. If the county wants to further explore this option, the commission recommends soliciting competitive bids and comparing those costs to those incurred by providing the services in-house with a right-sized staff. So I think that's the recommendation she's referring to. I'm not sure of the current status of that recommendation. That's where it came from. And we provided that to the council. I don't have the date in front of me when it was provided, but it's on the county webpage of the entire draft report.
Thank you for, and apologies to the staff, who are going to have to take that whole piece and put it in an appropriate place in the minutes here. But any further...
No, I said I was supportive of the, the bill.
Any other questions? We will now open the public hearing in that case. Anybody wants to, do we have a sign up for this?
No. We're good, we're good. Stay. Stay.
I'm sorry, there's no sign-ups. Would anybody like to testify on this, on this bill? Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 9517 as amended.
Bill Number 9517 as amended, An Ordinance Concerning Anaronda County Employee Retirement Savings Plan.
Is there any, any last discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 9517 as amended.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
No.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill Number 9517 as amended is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill 118.
Bill Number 118, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Board of Education Supplementary Appropriation.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The administration is here. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the county executive's office, again with me at the table Nancy Duden from the Office of Law, Matt Stansky, Director of Financial Operations for Anaronda County Public Schools. Bill 118 appropriates $9,167,000 of additional funds to the Board of Education and transfer funds among major categories of expenditure in the local education fund. The board recently approved the fiscal year 2018 second-quarter operating fund transfer, and this bill recognizes that $9.1 million. Mr. Stansky, be happy to answer any questions, council heads.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I read through the auditor's blue letter, who, it seems to indicate everything is in order, but just for the record, Ms. Dickinson, if you could give us the old sign off there.
On the board of it, yes, that's, that's fine. The biggest transfer is the transfer of $7 million from their general fund balance from fiscal year 17 that they're sending over to the health insurance fund, and they're not appropriated in this health insurance fund, so it's going to sit there as fund balance. And the other things in here are just from grant monies that they have, that they didn't anticipate, and they're also recognizing the extra revenue that they're getting because they have passed additional premium costs to the employees, if you remember us talking about that during budget last year. Those are the components, and I've reviewed it all, and it's fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Trumpauer. Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Peruca. Mr. Marzick, maybe a question for someone else on the panel. Just want to make sure I got the answer from Ms. Dickinson, but I wanted to put it on the record, since I had a constituent who asked me, none of the money that's in here that we're moving around in the pots is coming from video lottery terminal money, correct? That's correct. Okay. Just want to make sure, get that on the record. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything further? In that case, we will then open the public hearing. Remarks limited to two minutes. Yeah, I believe we have one person sign up to testify. Ms. Paola? No? Julia Paola? Okay. In that case, we will close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 118.
Bill Number 118, an ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education supplementary appropriation.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pruski?
As always, per the Ethics Commission, I'm disclosing that my spouse is an employee of the school system before I vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 118.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 118 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill 218.
Bill Number 218, an ordinance concerning legislative branch compensation.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is my bill. I don't have a whole lot to say about it other than I took the recommendations that were given to me by the compensation committee that we put together. I see some of, or maybe all of them, in the audience tonight, so I'm not going to go into too much detail since I presume they may have something to say. But I simply took their recommendations. I did read the report, and I put those recommendations into this ordinance. So this ordinance would, in fact, enact their recommendations just as they gave them to us. This is done in accordance with state law, and I will also say that some folks have expressed that this is the council giving itself an increase, but in fact, this council will not see any of this increase. State law, of course, says that you have to wait till the end of the term. So nothing in this ordinance will affect us sitting here unless you are one of the fortunate few to get reelected next term. And at least four of us will not be among you because we're term limited, for better or for worse. So with that, I think I'll reserve my right to speak later, but I'm going to turn it over to the administration. And then, I believe, in public hearing, we will hear from some members of the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick.
Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, and the County Executive's Office. First, I wanted to thank all those who responded with... To the questions we had posed down to the council. Some were very robust, others were very colorful, so I appreciate that. We have no concerns with this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick. And I guess we'll open up the public hearing then at this point? Thank you. Thank you. Yes, we do have a sign up sheet. John Wells, Jacinta Stanton, Bob Lee, Raymond DeVilbas, Robin Clark, David Whitney. Thank you for the efforts, the work you put into this. Appreciate it. Mr. John Wells.
Thank you. My name is John Wells, 11th Tucker Street, Annapolis. Thank you for your service. I don't think most people appreciate how much you do for so little pay. I think I do, and I'm 100% in favor of the bill to raise salaries. I'm the individual making an effort county and statewide to bring together both parties to work on those areas where we do agree in communities that each of you serve. A podcast which prides themselves on being the voice of the Republican Party recently viciously and baselessly attacked Mr. Grasso for, quote, "colluding with the left." They attacked him and me with opinions they represented as facts. It's dangerous when people abuse a platform for the sake of being divisive. This is Anaronda County, not Washington. We won't let politics divide us and our neighbors. Your passage of the 95% capacity bill demonstrated clearly that you set higher standards for this body and understand the need to work together. I want to thank John Grasso for his willingness to meet with communities and have the kind of conversations that directly affect their families. I'm also a webmaster behind the site let'sagreetoagree.org. Our first planned event was to address the GDP. I understand that most of you are working with communities to create small area plans in order to develop the next GDP. Thank you. It's important to remember that you won't always be here, and your predecessors may not be as upstanding as this body is proving to be. Government isn't about people sitting in the seats of a given amount of time, but rather the standards that institutions are required to maintain over the longer term. I invite the council to make use of the online tools that this website can offer. These directories will give you the ability to connect in one hop with literally hundreds of thousands of county citizens, no matter where they live, pray, attend PTA meetings, or work in county service. I also invite the council to consider supporting a state bill, S.J. 17, the Democracy Amendment Resolution. Details are attached. Thank you for your service to the citizens of our county. I'm 100% behind your pay increase proposal.
Mr. Wells, thank you very much. Appreciate your words. Ms. Stanton?
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members. My name is Jayceena Stanton, and as a member of the commission and past business owner, I am advocating for an increase in the salaries of future, not current, council members. When I initially opened my law firm about 10 years ago, I can attest to the fact that starting one's business is a challenge, as I'm sure many of the council members here can also do so. But it's a rewarding endeavor. And serving on the council is indeed a gift, but it's a position which requires a tremendous amount of time. And young professionals like myself should not be precluded from working as council members because it is cost prohibitive and does not enable an individual to earn livable wages. Many professionals have familial responsibilities, including childcare expenses, housing, student loan obligations, and other educational expenses. And due to the time obligations necessary to be successful and serve on the council, potential council members should not be forced to choose one path or the other by eking out a salary that would be difficult to raise a family on, or trying to work 60 hours a week at a job and then 40 to 60 hours as a council member, as I'm sure most of you do. So in order to provide work-life balance, we are suggesting that salaries be raised. I would also point you to the fact that Howard County is also looking at this as well, as Wacomaco County, and Baltimore City has also raised their salaries. They've also actually been increased already by $3,000 to $2,000 for their council president and council members. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stanton. Mr. Bob Lee?
I'm Bob Lee. I'm from Shadyside, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve on this commission as well. We... I want to make clear that when I was serving on this commission, it was my charge to decide what was adequate compensation for the work that you all do, the very hard work that you all do. And we weren't considering what was politically expedient or what people would find palatable. Our job was to figure out what it was that you all deserved to be compensated. And we looked at a lot of things. We looked at other counties. We met numerous times in these chambers, all of us. We were always all here. And we actually... We have no skin in this game. We're not getting paid. Our job was just to do our research, do our homework, look at other jurisdictions, look at employees in Anaronda County, and all the other research that we could do to come up with the recommendations that we're presenting you with tonight. And I said at one of the meetings, actually, that it was an embarrassment to me, what you all were making compared to what the other people in the other jurisdictions were making. It's just absolutely ridiculous. So all I want to do basically is say that anyone that thinks that your job is a part-time job doesn't know anything about your jobs. Your jobs are more than part-time, and they're actually more than full-time, and they're probably time and a half jobs. In addition to your regular jobs, church functions, citizen meetings, these council meetings where sometimes you sit here until midnight, getting your heads handed to you one way or another by people that aren't satisfied with what you're doing. So in conclusion, I just want to thank you for your service. I appreciate what you all do. It takes a huge amount of time, and in particular, Mr. Councilman Smith, for your longstanding service with the United States Marine Corps.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I didn't want to interrupt you talking to Mr. Smith there, but thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your kind words. Mr. DeVilbas?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Raymond DeVilbas. I live in Pasadena. I'd like to thank the council and my fellow commissioners for the opportunity to serve. After having spent 40 years in the city fire department, I'm fully aware of the struggles for fair compensation, and I don't think that I can add anything more than what's been said this evening. We did a lot of hard work for you. We hope that you'll accept our recommendations, and as Councilman Lee mentioned, long overdue. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. DeVilbas. Appreciate it very much. Robin Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the council. It's an honor to be here today. We appreciate the time to address you. I don't feel I need to say much. I served as the chair of the commission. I'm not sure if I stated for the record my name, Robin Clark Islandberg, and I'm of Annapolis. It was an incredible experience to serve on this commission. As you can tell, all of my colleagues have a strong sense of sincerity and good intention that we brought to this work. We're really pleased and grateful to the sponsor for putting forward legislation completely in line with our report with regard to both the salaries, which will allow the future council to be brought in line with cost of living increases and relative to other public servants throughout the state, and also the allowances which will support their service through and use of modern outreach methods. So I would just very strongly urge your favorable vote on this legislation, and I would like to yield the rest of my time back to the colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Clark. Thank you for serving as chairman. Pastor Whitney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the council. Thank you for your service, because I know you make great sacrifices for our county. And I just wanted to comment on the technology allowance, because I know that's kind of a little unusual, and I think there was some questions asked about that. Our purpose in that technology allowance is we know that today, to remain connected with your constituents, many people use Facebook, many people are using, you know, cell phones, are using all sorts of technology. And so we wanted to make it an encouragement to the next members of the next county council to use that technology that's available to stay maximally connected with their constituents. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Oh, excuse me. Excuse me. I'm so sorry.
Mr. Stealman?
Hi.
Go ahead. Introduce yourself.
Chris Stealman, from Millersville.
Yes.
A little nervous, sorry. But I think I was the guy that kind of made the meetings go a little bit longer when we were in here, because there's... I came into it being like, you know, those clowns maybe don't need a raise. But, you know, after seeing what all you do and seeing everything that was through different counties and different facts of different counties and so forth, I did see that you guys entirely do need a raise. You do work hard for what you do. I did go out in the community also and talk to, you know, a couple of people at the school. I'm a PTA president and that, and also in the community of people that we work for. And they're like, yeah, they work hard. They come around and see us, and, you know, you guys are here for hours and hours and nights and also. So I'm really nervous. Don't know how much to say, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, is there anybody else in the audience who would like to comment? If not, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 218.
Bill Number 218, an ordinance concerning legislative branch compensation.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Anyone? No? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 218.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill Number 218 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any other business to be brought before the council?
Motion adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
County council is adjourned until February 20 of 2018. I did.